Well, meeting to order. Local call, please.
Yes, Chairman O'Nogarado.
Here.
Mr. Venero.
Here.
Mr. Banda.
Here.
Mr. Giordano.
Here.
Mr. Graziano is not here. Ms. Laman.
Here.
Mr. Dian.
Here.
Ms. Nettleford is not here. Mr. Van Gary is not here. Mr. Gialrezzino.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Marinello.
Here.
Everybody will stand for questions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Sunshine notice, please. Pursuant to the requirement of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, published on 1975, known as the Sunshine Law Notice of this meeting was published in the December 1st, 2022 edition of The Double Times and the November 26th, 22 edition of The Star Ledger. Copy of the annual notice has been posted on the double town hall bulletin board as well as the township website.
Any communications?
Um, not at this time, Chair.
Chairents of comments, I just wanted to share a little thank you from Corinne. So everybody, uh, can see, I'm sure, that she's, um, may not be here next week. But we wish you the best.
Thank you.
Uh, approval of minutes for Thursday, September 14, 2023.
Motion.
Second.
Local.
Chairman O'Nogarado. Yes, Venero.
Yes.
Banda.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Laman.
Yes.
Dian.
Yes.
Next is list of bills. Can you get a motion?
Motion.
Second. Local.
Chairman O'Nogarado. Yes, Venero.
Yes.
Banda.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Laman.
Yes.
Dian.
Yes.
All right, work to resolutions to be memorialized. PB 2012, which is 86, 88 Ecclestone. Has everyone reviewed it?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion.
Second.
Local.
Chairman O'Nogarado. Yes, Venero.
Yes.
Banda.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Laman.
Yes.
Dian.
Yes.
New business, PB 2313, which is 202 and 215 Belville Avenue. Are you ready?
I'll definitely, I'll make a brief introduction, if that's okay.
Yes.
Alex sets up his, uh... Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Dean Donatelli on the redevelopment council for the township. The current laid out, very clearly on the agenda tonight, this is an area in need of redevelopment hearing. It's a public hearing, so we want to hear from the board and the public, obviously. Um, the property is laid out 202 through 15 Belville Avenue. Um, it's a former wet gentleman's lounge and a parking lot, parking lot across the street from, uh, from, from that, uh, that building. The purpose of the hearing is to hear the, hear the comments of the board, the public, and then to make a recommendation to the council as to whether the council should declare the property a non-combinational area in need of redevelopment. And when I say non-combination, that means the, uh, the council, the township can do everything under the local redevelopment and housing law, except, um, exercise the power of eminent domain. There's no intention to, uh, to do that here. So more importantly, I'm going to introduce Alex Dory. He is the township's planner. He's prepared a study which is, um, has been on record. Um, this hearing has been noticed to vote the public as well as the property owner. Um, and I'm going to introduce Alex. He's a professional planner and he's got a report and a presentation for, for you tonight. And if there's no questions for me, I'll turn it over to Alex.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Push question right through. You're sorry to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not to cut the truth or help you go.
I do.
State your name for the record. It's called USA, please.
Alexander Dougy. Last name is D-O-U-G-H-E-R-T-Y. So, as Dean indicated, um, we're starting 202 and 215 Belville Avenue. This is block 6801, lot 65, as well as block 6704, lot 8. For those of us, uh, the property as described is the former wet gentleman's lounge, gentleman's club, the associated parking lot, catty corner across the street. Um, with that being said, as, um, Dean indicated, uh, as you see on the screen, this is the, uh, the resolution 191 dash, uh, 2023, adopted July 11th, uh, 2023, which authorized the study of this area to see if it meets an area of, uh, redevelopment, non-combination. And with that...
Mr. Dory, can I just interrupt for one second? I just want to make sure all the stuff you presented here is part of what was in the, the report that you forwarded.
This, this is the same exact report, yes.
Just want to make sure it's the same one that's been on file, so that while we don't have to compare whether or not it was an earlier version.
No, this is the same exact one.
Thank you.
Apologies. Uh, so with that being said, um, on, on the packet of, uh, page 10, which is the authorization of the study, uh, for this area, and, uh, I'll go through the two, the two lots and, uh, what was identified out of the lot that, you know, and what criteria, if any, um, are needed for the redevelopment and my findings of that. So we'll kind of, uh, jump down a little bit here. We'll describe the study area on page two, a- as we just went through. Block 6801, lot 65, for reference, that is address 202 Belville Avenue. Block 6704, lot 8, that address is 215 Belville Avenue. So with that being said, we'll kind of go through some of the, uh, criteria, um, for an area need of redevelopment. Uh, NJSA 48 colon 12A dash 5, um, you'll see they're listed in bold on page three. Substandard building, and they have the legal definitions there next to it. A, um, substandard building, B is abandonment, C is vacant land, D is obsolete or faulty design, E is under utilization. Criteria F here is fire, another damage, G is urban enterprise zone, and H is smart growth. I wanted to discuss smart growth and what that means and, and as it relates to this, uh, this study. Uh, at page five, you'll see a title called Smart Growth Principles. So smart growth principles represent a set of strategic planning and development approaches aimed at establishing more sustainable, livable, and economically robust communities. These principles counteract urban sprawl, promote efficient land use, and elevate residents' quality of life. When we really look at this project here, as we stated earlier on, we do have an empty parking lot. Uh, we believe when we really look at the, the study, what took place here and the criteria needed, um, we'll, we'll see that this, this redevelopment is essentially at its core smart growth principles. Um, and so page five really outlines what that is. If I pull out a few for you. In, um, paragraph two, "The New Jersey State Planning Act enacted in 1985 stands as a pivotal piece of legislation addressing challenges posed by rapid urbanization and suburban sprawl in the state." Uh, so essentially what we have here, when we fast forward, uh, in 2001, the State Development and Redevelopment Plan, or the SDRP, um, really is, uh, representing a comprehensive long-term vision for the, uh, the state and the development pressures on the state. Uh, you know, that actually is coming up again for discussion. Uh, we're starting that discussion to relook at that plan, uh, because it has been some time. But essentially, uh, the SDRP is, uh, you know, fostering synchronized and uniform development across the state, really with an angle, uh, on efficient land use. You have infrastructure, you have urban areas, you have farmland, you have environmentally sensitive lands. So, um, the, the idea of that is to find areas in 2001, uh, state plan, find areas that are sustainable for development and redevelopment. And that, and in that, you have PA 1s through 5, Planning Areas 1, Planning Areas 5. Uh, this is a Planning Area 1 responsible for state development, redevelopment. You have existing infrastructure, you have, you know, we don't want to keep taking down virgin land. So with that being said, when I dug a little bit further into Bellville's 2021 Master Plan Reexamination Report, it strongly reaffirms the commitment, uh, to some of these smart growth principles. And with that being said, when I looked a little bit further, uh, going down that last paragraph here at the bottom of page five, "The current zoning, or the BA neighborhood retail makes you zone," um, which is the study area of section 23 dash 7.1, "serves the purpose of utilizing historically commercial nodes within the township. This aims to provide neighborhood commercial retail and services to the surrounding residential neighborhoods while preserving the traditional corner store character of the community along with maintaining the pattern of round floor retail with residents above. The current land uses, as we talked about, featuring the vacant gentleman's club and the associated surface parking lot across the street as their principal use within this neighborhood zone does not align with the intent of this zoning. Therefore, a comprehensive study of this area is warranted and in line, and in line with the efforts of the state plan for smart growth principles, as well as Bellville's master plan for more practical and efficient use of land that will advance the safety, health, morals, and general welfare of the community." I'll leave that last sentence there as I did my study. Uh, part of my approach and the method, methodology of, on you can see in the report, I do an Oprah request. I, I look at the history of the property and, and its impacts in the community and in the surrounding neighborhoods. Some of the police reports, some of the incidents reports surrounding this website, um, you know, there's some negative impacts from assaults, harassments, you know, a lot of police activity. Uh, and we'll kind of go through some aerial shots and some ground shots that I took of the site. It really is right in the middle of residential neighborhoods. So the property is vacant, and it's been vacant, uh, and, and we'll go through there. The application, if you will, of the statutory criteria, we'll start with block, uh, 6801, lot 65. Some of the findings, and we'll go through in a little bit greater detail, uh, for this particular, uh, property. Uh, it's the parking lot. We have an uninsulated structure that is not temperature controlled, lacking in restroom facilities. Um, this is an obsolete design and poses an unwholesome working condition. We'll go through there. This is essentially at its core a commercial use of the structure, and the general property has remained vacant for approximately three years. The arrangement and use of the property as an off-site parking lot demonstrates excessive land coverage and faulty arrangement of the site and the, and the general study area. Uh, it's infill development on an underutilized vacant, uh, piece of urban land promotes the principles of smart growth in the township's master plan. So we're going to hit some of those talking points. Block 6704, lot 8, uh, which is the, uh, the wet facility, the actual, um, gentleman's club across the street. Uh, we have a neighborhood, uh, commercial structure, uh, with limited windows and glazing that has fallen to an interior state of disrepair, uh, is one that is obsolete and poses unwholesome working conditions. We'll have some photos to show you of the interior conditions that exist there today. Uh, we have unauthorized improvements by way of construction, mechanical installations, uh, paired with antiquated utilities. Uh, they pose a detriment to the safety, health, moral, uh, general welfare of the community, as well as an unsafe and wholesome working condition. As again, we're pulled Oprah's on the property from permits, from violations to police reports and so forth. Uh, there has been incidents where there has been work done on the site that was not sanctioned or permitted. With that being said, the arrangement of the site and the need for an off-site surface parking lot demonstrates excessive land coverage, obsolete and faulty arrangement, uh, of the site in the study area. The commercial use of the structure has remained vacant for approximately three years. Again, this is infill development on a vacant piece of urban land that promotes the principles of smart growth in, in the township's master plan. So that's what we're looking at. Again, a summary of findings, we'll, we'll, we'll get into this. The parking lot, if you will, block 6801, lot 65, contains a modest 20-year-old attendance booth, if you will, uh, and a commercial parking lot with fencing along two sides. The entirety of the site satisfies section of light criteria, um, under A due to its obsolete design and unwholesome working conditions. We have subsection B because it has remained vacant for these two consecutive years. Um, subsection D because of the lack of sanitary facilities, excessive land coverage, and detrimental impacts to the area for the safety, health, morals, and welfare of the community. And subsection H for the consistency with smart growth principles. Uh, with that being said, it is unique in that it is at face value an accessory use, uh, to a principal use which is located across the street. Nonetheless, it, it is my belief, um, why we do meet the, uh, requirement under subsection, uh, section 5 of the redevelopment criteria. The site is unique in that it serves as an accessory use for the vacant gentleman's club for all-street parking, which is atypical section 5 light criteria. Likewise, the site does satisfy the criteria for designation as a non-combinat- combination area in need of redevelopment under section NJSA 48 colon 12A dash 3, or section 3 as we call it, since its inclusion is necessary for an effective redevelopment of the entire study area. Uh, we, we, we wouldn't want to just look at the gentleman's club and say that parking lot is fine. Include that parking lot will effectuate an overall better redevelopment plan and a redevelopment area for, for that. We'll move down to the, uh, wet facility, block 6704, lot 8. This contains a larger 101-year-old single-story commercial structure. The entirety of the site satisfies section 5 light criteria under subsection A due to its substandard, unsafe, and dilapidated, uh, interior conditions. We have subsection B because it remained vacant for at least two consecutive years. We have subsection D based on detrimental impacts on the area for safety, health, morals, and welfare of the community. The building's obsolete layout and outdated antiquity utility systems, which are inconsistent with today's design standards and codes, too costly to renovate. And subsection H for the consistency with smart growth principles. Uh, so with that being said, to come to these conclusions, there had to be, um, on-the-ground observations and documentation. So we'll kind of go through that and, and, you know, what at this property, both these properties satisfy the criteria as I described to you. Um, so with that being said, we'll kind of come down a little bit. We'll show you the, uh, the maps for orientation purposes. We have a couple set maps starting at page 14, as displayed on the screen. Some aerial, some tax maps, some zoning maps, some land use maps. As you can see, the sites are catty corner across the street. All right. And we'll kind of come down to, again, the, uh, table, if you will, so the more condensed version of what I just went through. As we see off to the right, the, um, criteria that each of these properties and their locations would satisfy. And then we'll go to, uh, the property itself, some of the analysis here, uh, and, and why we've come to the conclusion at the office that they meet this, uh, criteria. So based on the property analysis, starting on page 21, or the, uh, block 6801, lot 65, the parking lot. So for purpose A, we'll start with the property analysis here. "Based on field reconnaissance and conditions that are readily observable and reasonably ascertained in review of public documents, the current condition of the property is functionally obsolete despite being a parking lot associated with, um, the wet facility on lot 8, block 6704 by way of a use variance, and I referenced the resolution." So in order for the gentleman's club to have that parking lot, they had to build it in front of the board. So, um, during that time, it was not in permitted use. Um, this, um, the resolution is ZB, uh, 2006 dash 44. The entirety of the site does show, um, obvious conditions that would meet criteria of section 5 as indicated. Um, the site satisfies the criteria for designation under subsection A due to the substandard conditions of the structure, um, and the conducive, unwholesome working conditions. B because of the ongoing discontinuance of the building. Again, we have a improved structure as an attendance booth that has been vacant, um, for at least two consecutive years here. And then we have, based on the faulty arrangement of the site, as I went through before, for purpose D, and H for smart growth consistencies. We'll kind of go through, um, some of the, uh, photos here, starting on page 23. These are photographs that I took myself at the site on August 18th. The first photo right there, you'll kind of see, it is this excessive, uh, coverage of asphalt, it's a parking lot. We do have that attendance booth there. It's been unimproved, uh, for quite some time. The attendance booth does have, uh, power going to it, does have a meter, uh, but again, it's not insulated, there's no, there's no restrooms on the site. Uh, as you can see, we do have some fencing along the backside of that top photograph. What's interesting in the bottom photograph, besides some of, uh, some of the leaves that are coming into the asphalt, is we do not have fencing in the foreground here. Uh, we only have it on the backside and the far side, side lot line. And that's because the fencing has been taken out. So at some point, this entire property was fenced in on three sides with a gate in the front. So that fencing has been taken out. And the bottom photograph on page 25, you can kind of see that side profile line where the fence is missing. Um, so with that being said, that's, that's kind of an obsolete layout, excessive land coverage. Again, we have that structure. We believe this, this meets criteria 5, um, as indicated. Um, with that being said, with the last photograph on page 26, you'll kind of see it's, uh, physical orientation, catty corner across the street, the dark roof on the corner, that is the gentleman's club. So it is in close proximity. They needed that, that use variance to accommodate this property for parking for its, uh, its use, uh, some time ago. With that being said, we'll jump to the, uh, gentleman's club, block 6704, lot 8. And again, based on field reconnaissance of the conditions that are readily observable and reasonably ascertained in review of the pub, uh, public documents, the building has outlived its useful life. Uh, the conditions, particularly inside of the property, um, do pose a hazard. We'll see the exterior conditions. There is a, a lack of, um, light air, open space, and, and, uh, which was, um, satisfied purpose A. And unsafe conditions located in the property, subsection B here because of the ongoing discontinuance of, of the building that was previously used for commercial and this abandonment for a period of, uh, at least two consecutive years. And then we have purpose D, based on the building's age, obsolete layout, um, documented construction violations, and equated building systems, which are inconsistent with today's design standards and codes, too costly to renovate, clearly untenable in today's market, um, for neighborhood commercial space. The improved lot has been proven detrimental to the safety, health, morals, and welfare of the community with extensive violations and documentation from the police department by way of DUIs, harassment, robbery, domestic violence, simple assault, high-profile alcohol, alcoholic beverage control, ABC inspections. We had medical assistance, disorderly conduct, and sexual assault. Those are some of the, uh, police reports that came to my desk when I pulled the Oprah. So, um, I certainly believe that this would, uh, meet criteria D. And with that being said, we'll take a look at some of the photos. So this is, uh, the bottom photo on page 29. As you can see, we have, you know, three small windows. Uh, it's for a reason, it's a gentleman's club. You don't want people looking in the windows walking down the street. But as we talk about, it's competitive in the market today. Um, you know, a lot of businesses aren't going to repurpose this because it, they can find something, you know, more suitable at, at, at a better price point without having to do all the renovations, is why it's going to remain vacant. Uh, with that being said, we'll take a look at some other ones. Uh, page 30, took out the drum, flew it around. You can see on the side profiles of the building, fairly small windows. When we look at typical planning and zoning language of, of, of today, we have ordinances in place about, you know, not having a wall, uh, just a mass next to a residential. It's not good visual environment, it's, it's not good for the business, a tenant may leave. How do you get a new tenant in? You want adequate light air and open space, um, and, and with regards to that, this building is lacking those conditions. Uh, we'll go to page 31. You see the top photos, a top-down approach. There really isn't room for parking here in its current condition, which is why they needed the off-street parking to accommodate this commercial use. With that, the bottom photo here, you see is just, uh, a rat's nest of wires, hodgepodge, you know. There's some concerns here, it's going to take a lot of work to bring this building back to some kind of standard. We have AC systems hidden behind the, uh, chimneys or the protruding shafts there. It's done for a reason. I looked, there wasn't any HVAC permits pulled to install that. The bottom photo on page 32, we have floodlights installed in gutters. I'm not a building code official, I'm only a news community planner. I do work with developers, I do work municipalities. You're not installing floodlights in your gutter. You're not doing that. That's not something that, um, I feel would pass the building department's comfortability putting electrical systems in a gutter. The back, uh, back of the property, you see on page 33, is just fairly overgrown. We do have some 55-gallon drum barrels back there, unsure of what they are, but that's the condition. That's, so if there were to be parking, it's really going to be limited to this facility here. The bottom photo is the current condition of the kitchen. See it's abandoned, feels like it was just dropped with the event, never came back. With that, we look at page 35, we're actually in the facility. The power was cut off to the building, which I believe is probably the only reason why this building is still standing, seeing some of what I saw. You see, the ceilings are busted out, uh, we have light fixtures hanging down. It is in a great dis, this state of disrepair on the inside. It's certainly a time capsule, we have the, uh, tiger and leopard prints everywhere. As you can see, a lot of ceiling tiles missing, um, insulation hanging, uh, hanging out, HVAC systems, exposed wires and, and, you know, the, uh, um, the lights hanging down. We have for some odd reason, a ladder in the middle. Maybe somebody was going in, trying to remove the sound system and the audio. We have the restroom, which was unique. The women's restroom is fairly large, given it was, you know, it's, it's used, but, uh, we had vending machine in there, some lockers, um, and I believe we had, we had one stall in there. We went under the building, we went into the basement. Some things, you know, did catch me by surprise. The top photo here on page 37, kind of see that, that bowl at the top. Uh, the pipe just drops right into her, into that. I haven't seen that, I haven't come across that. We have a, uh, a stack of bricks or mortar that seems to be leaning over, holding this entire sewage system up by that one piece there. Uh, when we go to the bottom, you see just the, the wires and the old furnaces and, and heating establishments there. It, it was, uh, it was, it was interesting being down there. Um, with that being said, those are some of the physical conditions of the site. Uh, and this is my qualifications that you see on page 39. But what I do is now we saw the conditions of the site. I want to talk about the building within itself and the importance of bringing in the parking lot into this study. Can we repurpose the parking lot? Yeah, yes, we could. But then we have to answer the question, what's going to happen to the gentleman's club? Right, the gentleman's club is hooked to this parking lot. Could we repurpose and redevelop the gentleman's club? Certainly. Now we have a parking lot that's not developed. So recognizing one of these, uh, lots satisfying section, uh, criteria 5 for redevelopment, um, I believe they're interrelated by use variance. To develop one and leave the other alone really does put this study area, um, at a disadvantage. When we looked at the, um, current existing zoning, um, in place today, and I'll, I'll go back to that. I took, I took a greater look at the zoning as it relates to parking lots within the zone here. I'm sorry, I know exactly what it was. Surface parking lots, they can be allowed in the zone. It's not that it's going to be uncommon or hasn't happened, but in this particular case, and here it is on page 22. This is about the parking lot, block, uh, for the parking lot, I believe it's going to be, uh, 6801, lot 65. The site is necessary to affect the redevelopment of the area because it will no longer serve the associated use of lot 8, block 67 for the, the commercial wet facility for off-site parking. Site is currently a pre-existing non-conforming use within the BA zone as the primary associated use off-site was certi- certified as a pre-existing non-conforming use as well, um, uh, by resolution as it, as it stated, ZB 2006 dash 38. So there was also an issue with the gentleman's club when I pulled the Oprah. Because at some point, it was a restaurant, uh, a bar, Red, Red Barn, Red, Red Rooster, uh, some years ago. And then it became a gentleman's club. So it had to go get a use variance to become a gentleman's club. And that was, that's that resolution 38. And then as it was a gentleman's club, they turned around and needed parking. Then they got a use variance for the parking. So when I look at this, its current condition wasn't necessarily what the, the city, the town had in, in mind some years ago and, and... had in mind seven years ago and required a use variance. So, if we develop the wet site, which was a pre-existing non-conforming use, we have the deal with the parking lot. The discontinuance and the affiliation of the wet facility on lot eight lends the parking lot a pre-existing non-conforming use, and again, per the section of the town's twenty-three dash six-point-two A and twenty-three dash seven-point-seven B point sixteen, which directly prohibits parking lots as a principal use within the BA zone. So, if we develop the wet facility, this little attendance booth and parking lot would be the principal use with no association off-site to another use. And that's kind of the catch in your local zoning ordinance, is you can have a parking lot if it is associated with a principal use with an said amount of feet. So, to develop this site really makes this a pre-existing non-conforming usage for today's zone, as well as it did some years ago. So, redeveloping a site independently of lot eight would exacerbate, which is the wet facility, we develop a parking lot, would exacerbate the negative effects felt within the surrounding residential neighborhood as these two sites, again, are interrelated. The site displays deterrious characteristics of excessive land coverage, omission of sanitary facilities, a faulty arrangement. And again, section three, I believe, would be appropriate and advantageous of the township master plan in the overall BA zone as the principal parking lots are disruptive features in the urban and residential landscape. We have a missing void, a purpose side, miscellaneous law, aesthetically pleasing environment, good creative design and arrangement. In an urban setting, we don't really want to see gaps in that streetscape and that massing from the public realm. And again, we have an opportunity to do something that promotes the intent of the zone as well as the master plan, again, for that neighborhood commercial corridor. So, with that being said, I'll conclude my findings again for the redevelopment study here. The parking lot, two oh two Bellville Avenue, lots sixty-eight oh one, lot sixty-five, we believe it meets criteria A, B, D, and H for smart growth and/or section three to effectuate overall better redevelopment of the area. For the wet facility, block sixty-seven oh four, lot eight, two fifteen Bellville Avenue, we believe it meets criteria A, B, D, and H. And I'll stop, open for any questions or comments or concerns about the study.
Does anybody have any comments?
Just a comment that, I mean, this facility's been a detriment to the town for years. You know, the school, the church is close by, it's right next door to residential, high crime, brings in stuff the town doesn't want, so definitely any other use besides that has to improve the town.
Did you guys see the police reports?
Yeah.
They're crazy, and I don't even think about the shootings. No, I heard about the shooting, but I was unable to get that during the Oprah. But what I did read, the sexual assault, the crimes, you know, again, there's residential as well, right next door, right across the street. This use, and then the condition of the building itself, the lack of glazing, lack of parking, it's not really competitive in today's market. You can find a suitable building elsewhere. So, I think leaving this building vacant in a residential neighborhood also poses a detriment.
Any other comments? Does the public have any questions or comments? Mr. Sheldon, please. Well, your name to the record.
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, forty-seventh Flood Street. In regard to the shooting, if I remember correctly, Mr. Giudano was on the, at least once at time, but I, if I remember correctly, there was a fatal shooting in that parking lot, two thousand and fifteen.
No, it was in a, a house a few doors down from there, in the driveway. Not in the lot, but it was across the street.
I think they were paid.
It initiated from the bar.
It started from the bar, right.
So, they went to somebody's driveway?
Yes, and that's where it was.
That's worse.
Right. Well, as Mr. Minaro said, many of us have been longing for the day that this establishment is replaced, I just about anything else you can imagine. I did have a couple of legal questions, since these two properties are linked right now, and they're collectively the subject of this ANOR study. Once ANOR status is granted, does subsequent redevelopment have to have shared construction with the two lots, or can these two lots, once ANOR designation is connoted to the, can these two things then be separately developed?
Yes, the mayor and council will, or the planner, I guess, will be developing a redevelopment plan at some point in time, and that would be a consideration that they could make. They don't have to be linked. We actually have, as you know, other redevelopment areas in town. I think the Quick Check one is one of them where it's developed in part as, or going to be developed in part as a Quick Check and in part as a residential site, if I remember correctly.
The block was subdivided.
Right, exactly. So, there's not a requirement that that be the case. I mean, it may very well end up being the case that, but I have no idea what they intend to do in the redevelopment plan. That will come back here at some point, yes. The redevelopment plan itself will come back to this board for comment.
So, there is a very good chance that there'll be two separate projects here, both with ANOR designation?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I don't want to call it a very good chance, but there's a, it's a chance, it's legally allowed for that to be the case, yes.
My next question, legal question, is once ANOR status is granted, does that stay with the property, or does that stay with the owner under which the ANOR status was originally granted?
No, if the property, the property could be transferred, they could sell it. It could, you know, it could, this doesn't guarantee that it would be developed even, right? I mean, they could sell it with the status, but you're always free to transfer your property that way.
So, once ANOR status is granted, it stays with the property, the owner at the time is then free to sell the property to somebody else who will then redevelop it?
Yeah, they're not, this doesn't handcuff them or prohibit them from being able to sell it, yes.
You get a new owner, that new owner doesn't have to come back and have another ANOR study. Once the ANOR status is granted, that's it, it's done.
As you know from the presentation, it's about the property, not the owner.
Right, right. Well, ANOR status obviously greatly exponentially increases the worth of the property because ANOR status is necessary in order for the long-term tax exemption or pilot to be granted by the government body. So, that's like the holy grail, you can get the ANOR designation. From what I've gathered, attending all these meetings over the years, many banks will not finance a project unless there is a long-term tax exemption in place for that project. So, obviously, developers would like to have the ANOR status. You may not be able to speak at this point, you may be too premature, but do you have any idea who the developer of these two projects may be, or what the possible use, potential use is? Is that something that will be turned around?
None of us, none of that's before us.
The last thing I just want to say, so before I return to my seat, I would like, just for my own records, a copy of Mr. Goward's report. I'll submit the normal Oprah request, and I guess, you know, Corinne will get that during the course of tomorrow. Hopefully, we'll keep one in the last.
You better get it tomorrow.
I wish you best.
Mr. Sheldon, in light of what could happen tomorrow, you have my copy?
Oh, thank you.
There we go.
Good things happen when I'm kind.
One less Oprah you have to give.
You're really excited tonight.
And Tom, Twitter? Any other comments? I have none.
Madam Scher, just before, this would be the appropriate time where you go take a vote, a motion, a second, and a vote, which I think you should do, obviously, at this point. But in preparation for tonight's meeting and as speaking with Mr. Donatelli, we prepared a resolution of approval so that we could do this in one suit instead of having to do it the next time. So, if you vote to approve, I would ask that at that point in time, you take a five-minute recess so I can distribute these for everyone to look at, and then you can vote on the resolution itself.
Okay.
Okay?
Motion.
Second.
Rocco. Chairwoman Novarado.
Yes.
Minero.
Yes.
Panda.
Yes.
Jordana.
Yes.
Guammin.
Yes.
Guyan.
Yes.
Okay, so before you close up shop, I'm going to ask you to just take a recess so I can hand these out. Also, I ask you to ignore the fact that I obviously copied this myself, and there are blank pages in the middle of it. This is what happens when I try to do something myself.
Chairwoman Novarado. Yes. Minero.
Yes.
Panda.
Yes.
Jordana.
Yes.
Guammin.
Yes.
Guyan.
Yes.
Okay, if I can ask the chairwoman and the secretary to sign off on it tonight so I can send it to the mayor and council. But done already, nice, all right. All right. I take that back.
When is the meeting tomorrow? Are you going to send it? There are no applications.
Well, if you come to work.
I'm coming to work. My last day. Thanks. There are no applications before the board. Can I get a German motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody be back in November ninth. Everybody.